I do think that it was very complete, and I know that there was a lot of effort and work that went into it.
Thank you. One of the things that I would like to comment about that, Mayor, was what you're saying is absolutely true. We looked at the residential areas of the city of Troy, and your community has had a longstanding tradition of having strong neighborhood areas. And it's one of those circumstances where, you know, if it's not broken, don't try to fix it. And so we felt that there was very little in the existing residential zoning districts that needed to be fixed. By the same token, we know that the non-residential areas can have as much impact at the perimeters as what goes on within the neighborhood. So while we have certainly developed a broader range of uses and things of that nature, more of a mixture of uses, a number of the kinds of things the council was telling us that they wanted to see in our non-residential areas, the standards for compatibility between non-residential and residential areas are actually much stronger. I mean, the landscape buffering, the landscape standards, all of the kinds of things that you need to protect that transitional area are much stronger and much, I think, more clearly stated in this ordinance than in your current ordinance. So we think that the combination of those two measures are really going to bring added value to the community. If we can protect the existing neighborhoods, and by the same token, we can induce good quality, compatible development in the non-residential areas, all of those things are going to strengthen the kind of things that you're struggling with right now in terms of improving tax base.
Thank you. Any other questions from the council? Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes, Councilman Howrillak?
Yes, let's see here. I note that with respect to commercial vehicles, that the -- perhaps you can enlighten me, but all I can find in the proposed ordinance is that they're prohibited, with that one exception. We currently have criteria, or guidelines, if you will, for allowing for temporary parking of commercial vehicles in residential districts. With the removal of that language, what is the procedure going to be for somebody who wishes to appeal?
There will still be an appeal -- there'll still be a appeal process. That will go before the zoning Board of Appeals, as with all other appeals in the ordinance.
And so, but you mentioned in a number of times in your preamble here, and also in the draft, in the memo that preceded the ordinance adoption here, that it is going to be harder to park a commercial vehicle. Is that correct?
I'm sorry.
It's going to be harder to park a commercial vehicle in a residential district. Is that correct?
Well, I mean, that's hard to say until there's an actual application of the ordinance. There are, you know, the standards are clear in terms of what can be parked, what kind of commercial vehicle can be parked. And for any relaxation of that, Mr. Howrillak, you would have to prove the necessity for a variance. And so, from that standpoint, it could be interpreted as being more rigorous, yes.
Currently, how many commercial vehicle temporary approvals do we have? Are you aware of how many?
I'm not sure about that.
I don't know.
Because you just mentioned a few minutes ago that if it's not broke, there's nothing to fix. And so my concern is that, I don't recall there being an overrunning of this city by semi-trucks, and that's not even what we're talking about in most cases. It's a working-class individual, lives in a section of the city where people work with their hands, and certain neighbors perhaps don't work with their hands and don't like to see somebody with a sign on their vehicle, even though they may very well be an attorney or an accountant who drives around in a vehicle that doesn't have tools in it other than a calculator and a briefcase. And so somebody's making the distinction based on what somebody's doing, not necessarily what they're driving. And yet they want to prohibit what they're driving. So I don't really understand where the problem is. I don't really understand that we have a solution to a problem that somebody thinks exists.
The prohibition, or at least regulation, of commercial vehicles has been a high priority of the Planning Commission for years, literally years. And this policy is being furthered by the Planning Commission.
Right, I noted that it was Planning Commission-driven.
And I do want to note, most of the Planning Commission. There was one Planning Commission member who consistently was a staunch proponent of parking of commercial vehicles in residential districts. But the other Planning Commissioners were staunch opponents of parking commercial vehicles in residential districts.
Because I think what you've done overall is you've made it more -- the zoning ordinance will be more user-friendly, it's going to be more practical. But I think in this particular case, you know, we have different residential districts where there are different expectations of things that will happen in neighborhoods. And I think we, perhaps there's another way to go about doing it. But I mean, if you have an area of the city where they don't think anybody should park a vehicle outside their garage, that's one thing. Then you have other neighborhoods where they expect to see two or three work vans parked in a driveway. So you need to be able to, at least in my opinion, be able to respond to the needs of the neighborhoods, by the same token, protecting the rights of the property owners to have their property value protected.
Right. I think, Mr. Howrillak, you know, under that very scenario that you have just given, it would be inappropriate consideration of a Board of Appeals in that particular case. And I think the type of situation that you describe should well and would well be taken into consideration in the case of an appeal.
Well, I guess my question is, what standards do they have? Can they simply willy-nilly give them an approval, or shouldn't there be guidelines of some sort?
And there are. In the Board of Appeals section, there are very specific guidelines in terms of what constitutes either a practical difficulty or an undue hardship.
Madam Mayor?
Councilman, Mayor Perdón Kerwin?
And I know you want to get to the public hearing, so I wanted to do that.
We do have someone who signed up for it.
Right, I saw that. So I just simply wanted to say in response to this particular example, I know it was in fact a referral that came from City Council for Planning Commission to consider not only the definition of a vehicle, but also to look into all other communities and what certain regulations they had. And since it was removed from the council table, it actually has gone quite well with the group now known as ZBA, formerly BZA. Yeah? So I'm pleased to see it. And I know that each of us will have a chance to vote on the zoning ordinance. If someone doesn't feel that an area or some areas are inappropriate, then the vote can indicate that.
Thank you. We'll -- oh.
Mayor?
We have a question here from Councilwoman McGinnis.
Well, I don't know if it's necessarily a question, but I did just want to congratulate you on a job well done. And I dare say I think it was worth the wait. And I do think that oddly enough, it coincides with some of the information we just discussed in terms of the community survey, because I think it really goes back to trying to figure out who we want to be as a community. And we had an overhaul with the master plan, and that was a direct result of feedback from the community about where we wanted to be and where we wanted to be in the future. And the tool that was missing was this. And having this comprehensive overwrite that is so easy to use and provides great tools, I think, will allow us to move forward with the master plan that was articulated by our community. So I think that it's appropriate, appropriate that we're dealing with it tonight, and I just wanted to congratulate everybody on a job well done.
Anyone else?
Mayor?
Councilman Howrillak?
Yes, I wanted to ask if you could just give a brief description to the City Council of the difference between somebody who wants a, say for example, a 10-person residential daycare facility running out of their house, what the difference is between before this is being adopted and after?
Are you talking about specifically a family daycare home? Or, well, family daycare homes, of course, are not regulated. They're six persons or less.
Right, the group daycare, which would be, say, for example, grandmother taking care of eight children.
Daycare homes, daycare facilities, and at least those that are in residential homes, for those facilities that are between one and six children cared for in residential homes, those are known as family daycare homes. And they're permitted by right across the board in all single-family residential districts. Group daycare homes, which are seven, between seven and 12 children in a residence, will not be permitted in this, under this proposed zoning ordinance, not be permitted in any zoning district, including residential zoning districts.
Do we have any idea of how many of those that we have in the city?
I believe, the last time I checked, which was a couple months ago, I want to say approximately 10, give or take. And those would be, the existing homes that were legally established at the time that this is adopted would be legal non-conforming, essentially grandfathered in.
One additional thing I wanted to note, to add to that conversation. You could conceivably still have a childcare facility of some kind that would have between seven and 12 units. It's just that it would only be permitted as a special use and would have to meet the standards for a daycare center or preschool, which are permitted. It's just the family daycare homes, which have much lower standards in terms of, you know, the special use provisions. Those are no longer permitted. You can have fewer, you just have to meet the daycare provisions. And it's classified as a daycare, a commercial daycare.
But the ones that are existing are grandfathered in, and they can continue.
Correct.
I think that's an important point. Okay, any others? Okay, we'll open the public hearing. I note that we had someone sign up that wanted to speak on it, and that's Mary Ann Bernardi, so I'll call on her at this time. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor and Council.
You're welcome.
I have a couple of concerns. I did attend the open house where the new zoning ordinance was presented, and I presented my concerns at that meeting. And I was given reasons why my concerns shouldn't be concerns. And I respect that people are very polite and very open and talk to me, but my concerns prevail in spite of the explanations. And actually, I'm so shocked that these, what I'm, these two points that I'm about to bring up, I'm so shocked that they haven't been brought up to this point, that I'm bringing them up. I thought I would hear about them. They're major changes. Now, maybe I'm in the wrong meeting, and if so, please just tell me, but I'll proceed and give you my concerns. As I am aware, these new guidelines would allow the Planning Commission, rather than City Council, correct, to approve preliminary site plans for condominiums. Now, I didn't hear that tonight. It's shocking to me. It's a huge change. The new guidelines would also allow city staff, rather than City Council, to approve final plans. Am I correct in that as well? Okay, I haven't heard that tonight. Residential neighborhoods abutting areas of proposed new development for condominiums would consequently have diminished or no representation by their elected officials. This would be extremely problematic for residents, since the only currency that residents really have is their vote and the accompanying transparency that comes along with that process. When residents are not represented by elected officials, they are dwarfed by the money and the power of developers, and the light of day does not shine as brightly when unelected persons are in complete control. It is not a good idea to remove or to marginalize our elected officials in the process of approving site plans for new condominiums. My second concern revolves around the new guidelines for PUDs, Public Urban Developments. These PUDs allow for much greater density in the proposed developments. Increasing density in already existing or abutting, already existing neighborhood residential areas could pose a danger to the property values and/or the quality of life of the existing residences. Although the Planning Commission, rather than allowing the Planning Commission, rather than the City Council, to approve these plans, puts existing neighborhoods in a much more vulnerable position, since diminished transparency and the power of the vote would no longer be protecting them. That is really our only protection. It is not a good idea to remove or to marginalize the role of City Council in approving PUDs. Now, just, that's my prepared statement. I also wanted to add to that, that I had a few concerns early on. This was a two-year process. And I do watch the Planning Commission on occasion, not every single meeting. But I did watch this quite a lot in the beginning of the process. And am I on a five-minute thing?
You have a minute.
Oh, okay. And in one of those beginning meetings, one of the Planning Commission members brought up the idea of having the public involved from the very beginning along the process. And Mr. Carlisle's answer to that was, no. He nixed it right away, saying that it's much more saleable when it's brought out as a finished product. And I didn't appreciate that. And I don't appreciate either that it's brought, that this is coming out tonight, when all of these residents are here with little children waiting to be heard, and their attention, all of our attention, is really focused on the library. And, pardon me?
Go ahead, Ms. Bernardi.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought I heard something. But I just think that it could have been brought out when we could have considered these kinds of issues in a little bit more depth, because Mr. Howrillak, Councilman Howrillak, brought up some two very good points, and I didn't hear very specific answers coming back. And another comment that I heard in some, one of these Planning Commission meetings was about rules and regulations. And I believe it was Mr. Carlisle saying that, well, throw out the book, there are no rules or regulations now. And I know, I brought that concern up, and I was told, well, no, no, that's not true. There are rules and regulations. But I think they're pretty broad and possibly not as specific enough to deal with these controversial issues like family daycare, like commercial vehicles. I live in a neighborhood where there are two commercial vehicles. And one neighbor was complained, a neighbor complained about one of them, and he was before council, and it was resolved. What will happen to somebody like that when they have to go to Planning Commission instead of here? So, thank you.
Anyone else that's here on the, anyone else? Is there anyone else that is here to speak on this particular thing, which is the zoning ordinance?
I wasn't going to speak on this, but there was a very interesting point brought up. And I'm very familiar with wind power and windmills, because a lot of that's going on in the thumb area. And I'd like to weigh in on, they've only had one regulation. It's a height regulation of 25 feet in height. But did anybody ever consider the noise from these windmills? There was nothing in there about noise abatement? Nothing. I think that the Commission has a lot more work to do on this whole program. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, that closes the public hearing. The item is before us for a resolution. Councilwoman Beltramey?
I would like that some of the suggestions I made be incorporated into the ordinance, if no one has an objection, and one from Councilman Howrillak as well. And if you want me to do that, I'll move the resolution, and I'll say, with these additions.
Let me find that here and see if there are any opposition to that. You want to move the resolution, and then we'll discuss those? You're going to say?
With the following additions.
With the following additions?
In the section.
Well, I think that we need to have a resolution on the floor to discuss it.
That's what I'm fixing to move the resolution.
All right, okay.
With these additions. Resolve that the city of Troy zoning ordinance text and map be amended to read as written in the proposed zoning ordinance text, March 31, 2011 draft and map prepared by the city of Troy Planning Department dated 2/22/2011, with the term "drive-throughs" added to use group six of table 5.03A1 as recommended by the Planning Commission. And in the section pertaining to the requirement for an RV being owned by a property owner, add the language "to allow a leased vehicle" to be requested for approval. Also, in section 3.10D, in the last sentence, add the word "present" after "members" for approval. In section 9.4A, add a reference to the implementation of the master plan when considering for compatibility. And you notice that with the PUD.
Right.
In 1106C3, add language to the effect that efforts shall be made to ensure that multiple transportation modes are safely and effectively accommodated in an effort to provide alternate modes of access and alleviate vehicle traffic congestion, particularly as it pertains to the improvements necessary along major roads. Editorial changes to 11.06E4, the second paragraph in that section, be renumbered as a new number six. And adding to the landscaping, 13.02A7, add, rather than just currently allowed in Troy, or native plant that are acclimated to the site conditions. Native plants.
Right.
That are acclimated to the site conditions. And, going back to the resolution, be it further resolved, the following typographical errors shall be corrected in the amended document. Hotel access to all rooms provided from planned unit development, add "prens," PUD closed "prens." Preliminary development plan, add the closing of the parenthesis. 8.03D1, first line, strike the word "for" before "final." 12.05, correct the spelling of easements in the title. 13.02B dot two dot A, delete "at" in the sixth line. 14.01C4, features of the site, strike "were," replace it with "was." 14.02A, change accessory dwellings to accessory buildings. 15.02A1, strike "may" before the phrase "shall be a member of the Planning Commission." Support. Thank you.
Moved by Councilwoman Beltramey, seconded by Councilwoman McGinnis, that we approved the resolution as printed with the changes that were so delineated, and also the typographical errors. And that was presented to us in a written document form, so we did know before this evening. Discussion of the motion?
Mayor?
Councilman Howrillak?
Yes, do we have any updated information on the number of temporary commercial vehicle approvals that we have at present?
Mr. Miller?
I don't have any information with me right now regarding the number.
Further discussion of the motion?
Mayor, just to continue, I have concerns about a couple things. One is we just had a litany of changes at the table, and we did only receive that this afternoon. More than likely, those are fine. However, I would like, I think that council should take some time to review that. Also, I think Mary Ann Bernardi made some good points about PUD approvals and condo site plans, PUDs in particular, because the pendulum has swung greatly to the other side with planned unit developments, insofar as, in the old days, it was very punitive to be a developer or to be a property owner in the city. And now it seems like we are providing a planned unit development process that allows developers to run roughshod over the city. And the PUD process can be used to circumvent reasonable development standards. And I've been, I felt this is the way that we've been going, even with the existing zoning ordinance and the changes that have been made, and it's even more dramatic now. Indeed, we need development, but we also need to protect the property values of those who currently and will continue to own property in this city. I think, I have great concerns about the changes to commercial vehicles. I think there's a problem that doesn't exist, that is being addressed inadequately with lack of data. You know, again, it comes back to allow neighborhoods to develop the kind of neighborhood they want to live in, and don't make somebody, don't run out your blue-collar workers, people that work with their hands, landscapers, plumbers, electricians, and so on and so forth, from Troy, because you don't want them to bring their vehicles home to work. This is a time of economic distress, and we need to welcome everybody into our city. Likewise, home occupations, we're tightening that up, again, a problem that doesn't exist that's being addressed. Is there a problem with people that are working on their computers at home and may have a few people that come to show up? I understand you're going to tell me that the standards are reasonable, but they're less reasonable than they were before, and I don't think that they are. I think there's a movement to restrict people's use of certain properties while allowing wealthier developers to be able to circumvent regulations. And then the issue of group daycare homes. We've had this discussion over and over again, and it's being slipped into a complete rewrite of the zoning ordinance. I don't think it's a, I don't think we have a big problem with people taking care of neighborhood children. It's something that should be welcomed, because it's a lot better than to take your child, if you're going to have to leave off your child somewhere where you work, it's better to leave that child in your neighborhood with someone you know and trust, as opposed to leaving it in a sterilized commercial operation miles from your home.
Further discussion of the motion? The vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Mayor?
Councilman Howrillak?
Yes, in that light, I will move to postpone the act of resolution until the next regular City Council meeting.
Do we have a second?
Okay.
Hearing none? No, ma'am, we don't call in the audience now. Mrs. Bartholomew, the vote?
Councilmember Beltramey?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Howrillak?
No.
Kerwin?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes. Motion passes. Council, take a five-minute break. We turn for the public comment section. We turn for the public comment section.
Mayor Protam Kerwin. Discussion, the vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Councilwoman Harlock?
No.
Kerwin?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilwoman Beltrameeny?
Yes.
Fleming?
No.
Motion passes. I will call the first five people to speak and they line up in the aisle way and then when we get to the fourth person, I'll call on the next five and so that we can move along. We'll have three minutes. Mrs. Bittner, would you like to change the clock here from five to three? And, thank you. And in this order, please. Marianne Bernardi, John Getz, Shirley Black, Vanilla Cantermaneri, Beth Trout, and Tony Haddad. If those five people would please line up in that order. Okay, Mrs. Bernardi?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Tonight marks the culmination of a long and arduous process in which two factions in the city have been struggling with each other over the outcome of the library. The process has been both alarming and revolting, characterized by scapegoating, hostility, name-calling, and blogs on the Internet plastered with hateful personal attacks. It has been a major embarrassment to Troy. And I would like to say right here, none of these people that I have seen tonight are in that category. To me, I think the public is here tonight and I'm so thankful they are. But I'm talking about past meetings, meeting after meeting after meeting, the same people coming up here. What is truly remarkable in all this is that the two warring groups want the same end result. They both want the library to survive. Given the overwhelming number of petitioners who have come forward to save the library, there leaves no other alternative than to return the issue back to the people for a decision. The people from both groups have spoken and you are bound to represent them. You need to keep the library open until the next election and then put a proposal on the ballot that is a compromise between the two groups. That is what we have been missing here, is compromise. As important as the library is, health and safety should be held above all else. The extremely poor clearing of our roads last winter put all of us in danger. A repeat of this must not be tolerated for any reason. However, we should not be forced to sacrifice safety to keep the library open. Both need to be achieved. It comes down to a matter of trust. How can we trust that we really have to make the sacrifices we are being asked to make when a $40 million brand-new library was proposed a short time prior to our learning that we cannot afford even our current library? How can we trust when you accept meals from Automation Alley, a private nonprofit organization that is looking for money from your votes? How can we trust when you agreed to let Birmingham pay less than Troy agreed to pay for a transit center, a transit center that no one wants or needs? How can we trust when so much money has been spent on consultants and lobbyists for various reasons? How can we trust when there is no tax abatement for business that you do not embrace with open arms? How can we trust when you continue to shift the burden to residents and to city employees who do the daily work? How can we trust when you continue to strip residents of all the amenities that they have spent their entire lives paying for? Yes, this is a trust issue and that is the reason why the decision about the library must be handed back to the people. The charter amendment is working the way it was meant to work.
Thank you, Mr. Getz.
First of all...
Folks, I'm going to remind you of what I said earlier. If you hear something that you like, we can see your face. Give us a smile, please. If we have to wait after every speaker for clapping, it's going to be a long... We had at least 30 people sign up to speak. Mr. Getz, go ahead.
First of all, I'd like to second...
Sir? Go ahead, Mr. Getz. You have the floor.
I'd like to first comment on a statement made by the prior lady in connection with another issue. I think it's shameful of the council not to let the speakers in their general commentary take precedence over certain other issues that were discussed for two hours before these people, most of the time... Most of these people have left. And they're little children, you're going to understand why they left. I think it's a shame on you for not taking that into consideration. When's enough enough? I was driving to Troy a couple of days ago and I got to the border of Troy. I saw the signed slogan saying, "City of Tomorrow Today." That was a great sign slogan when the city was being run by, under the tutelage of Frank Gersten Ecker and Mayor Doyle, who got a lot of things accomplished without the rancor that's taking place in this community today. I also like to make a comment on the fact that I have the community interest at heart. I'm not a "me" person, as was described by the person who presented the survey to the city earlier. I don't use the library. I don't use the nature center. I don't use the community center. I support them 100 percent. It's a shame, being a resident for over 40 years, that I have to come and make this statement. I urge you, if you can't afford it in your budget, to have a separate standalone millage proposal, and I think you should back it, contrary to the interest of some people who are opposed to it, and use other means, which I don't consider admirable, to support a position and obfuscate the general intent of the people proposing this millage. I have, since I don't use these facilities, I have still voted in every election when a millage came up for it because I think these are crown jewels of the city and you should keep these jewels in place. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Shirley Black?
Good evening and thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. I have, I guess my message is going to be short and sweet. I've talked to a lot of people. I've read a lot of articles. I've paid attention to the letters to the editor, which have been very interesting. Went to the roundtable discussions. I've experienced anger, frustration, and resignation after going to the roundtable discussions and hearing that closing the library was a done deal. I'm a 26-year resident. I have loved this city. I've watched it grow. I did not raise children here, except for one daughter who was ready to leave our home, you know, once we moved here. But I will say that I've voted for everything as well because I really believed that building a city, making it a wonderful place to live, was very important for all the residents. I guess the survey has spoken. The people really would like the library. And so I'm really here to implore you to find a way to solve this problem. Everybody here this evening wants the library to remain open. And if we could have another millage proposal, obviously, I think people would vote for it. I believe last time we only had 20 percent of the people vote. It was lost by 600 votes, if I'm not mistaken. And I think that another vote would certainly give us the money we need to keep the library open. I believe it's a core service to our community. And I just want to remind you folks here, something, if my facts are correct, that our library here in Troy was known to be second in the state and 10th in the nation for a city our size. So it just seems just a terrible shame if it should close. So, thank you.
Vanilla? Would you like to adjust the microphone down? Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. I'm really disappointed that our library is closing. I just wish I could do something about it. And I have two, like, statements I really like. One of them is, "I wish kids can vote," because if kids voted, then we'll have a lot more votes. Because everybody likes the library. And I have another, and I have another statement that I like too. "Live or Leave Troy." This means it's your choice. You can either leave Troy because its library is closing, or you can live in Troy and get over. Yes. Thank you.
Thank you. You're very welcome. Next, we'll hear from Beth. Beth?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm grateful to have the opportunity to speak on the library issue. What I gather is that there are two groups of people, those who don't want any new taxes but believe the library needs to be saved, and those who believe that a millage is the only way to save the library. Both groups, in fact, the majority of residents, seem to agree that we need to save the library. For those who believe that a voter-approved millage is the only way, the earliest we could pass a millage will be August. I would suggest that you find a way to fund the library, at very least, until that time. In the meanwhile, I believe that we should hold community meetings specifically addressing the library issue. I don't believe it's too late to hold a public forum on the issue. We need to know the council's thinking on the whole issue, and we, the residents, want you to hear our thinking as well. We all need to work together to find a solution. If you don't take action and the library closes, then you're letting down the Troy residents who believe the library should remain open. The mistrust that the residents have in the council would increase. If we work together, we can find that everyone will win. If the library closes, we all lose. Give us hope.
Thank you. Before I call on the next person, before you start speaking, let me call on the next five people. Would you put your sign down, ma'am? The people behind can't see. Thank you. Before you start, Mr. Haddad, let's call the next five. Gordon Shepke, John Byrd, Karen Craft, John Hennessy, Richard Peters. Will those people line up in that order? Yes, Mr. Haddad?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Miss Mayor, City Council, city employees, city manager, city clerk. And I want to, I want to give my special thanks to whoever was involved to take care of a problem that I had, you know, a few months ago. Whoever did it, you know, helped me with that. God bless them. And, and since I don't know which one exactly, I'm going to thank all of you for really solving my problem that I was addressing, you know, in the past, including, I want to thank the human resources chief, you know, in the city management, because she's not here. I want to thank her in case she is the one also made a difference. Now, I really, really pray that God bless you all. Again, I love you all. And the reason you see on my jacket Troy Athens and Troy High School, because I love them both. I love all the kids in Troy. I worked for the Troy School District for near 17 years. I lived in Troy for 30 years. And I don't have no games, no gimmicks. I, I love everybody. I don't hate anybody. I respect everybody. And I really feel that, that, you know, we, you know, we shouldn't threaten the voters, you know, with the library. We shouldn't threaten the voters, you know, by shodding them, you know, with the snow removal. I think there's a conspiracy on that. And anybody who wants to know, you know, the details that I experienced, that I, that I saw during the, especially in somewhere around February 22nd, you know, like by accident, you know, I felt very suspicious. If you want to call me, you know, you can call me. My phone number is 248-821-1944, and I will talk to you and I will meet with you. And so, please, you know, let's, you know, let's take care of the library, take care of the snow for the next winter. I know that Mr. Fleming and Mr. Harlock, for sure, you know, they support, you know, for sure, hands-down, the library and all that, and the snow and everything. The other five of you, you know, I really want to, want to tell with all due respect to all the five of you, you, you know, three of, let's say, two of you responsible, you know, to vote for the library, to back up Fleming and back up Harlock, or you're going to risk your chance to be elected the next election, you know, by the people of Troy. That's true. That's very true. And, and also, one last thing I want to say, that for our police department and, and the city services, of course, we are very happy, the fire department. I ask, you know, the council always to remember, please, never to lay off any police officer, never. And also, not to hire a new officer. You know what I mean? So we can be stable. Thank you.
Mr. Shepke, you're next. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Shepke?
Thank you very much for the opportunity to come up and talk tonight. My name's Gordon Shepke. I'm a 41-year resident of the city. I think Marianne Bernardi was right. It's, it's, the message that we are trying to get to you as our council is a matter of trust. We do not trust you. We want the library. I don't care if your vote, if you voted no or you voted yes. We want the library. There's just some of us that want to hold you a little bit more accountable than you have been. We attended a meeting last Thursday put in by Troy Citizens United, and basically, there's, there seems to be a problem. Why should we trust John Zerleig's A or B? It, it just, it's just, it, we're not as broke as what the city's claiming. And another thing, the transit station, from what I understand, and I don't know if this is for sure, I'd like some council clarification, Birmingham has backed out. And if I would much, I don't even think the transit station's in the same category as a library. A library is for future generations to grow and develop properly and to become good citizens of this community. And I think it's, it's a shame that it's being held hostage by this community, not this community, but this council, for over a year. You know, and when, there's no thing in life that's black or white, either A or B. We have to vote for one or the other. We all run our homes. Nobody, in my 72 years on this green earth, I have never had either this option or that option. Me and my wife had, had to get together and we have to make compromises here and compromises here. And this city manager and administration doesn't seem to want to make any kind of compromises at all, doesn't even, doesn't even want to meet and talk over things. How can we trust you to run this city when you can't even sit and talk over a talking point and try to come up with a consensus? This is lousy, this is a lousy way to run the city, as far as I'm concerned. And it's not going to be, it's not going to be put up with by the residents. So, your refusal, refusal to discuss matters as adults and as, as members of this council together and try to come up with a consensus is, is just unexcusable. Facts are stubborn things, and there's been a lot of arm-twisting threats, signs, people picketing, name-calling. Let's bring this city together and us be a win-win. And we have to keep the library, and whether or not there's a small millage increase or not, the budget, the meeting, and it's your budget, your figures, show that there is, there's no real big shortfall like is being presented in Plan A and Plan B. Thank you.
I just hope, when you listen to the first gentleman with the survey, he was describing a bedroom community in the true sense of the word. That was what he was describing Troy as. I had a five-minute speech, I'm going to cut it down. So, I came here really just to ask a couple of real quick questions. First, I wanted to go back and the reason for the creation of cities was to provide services. And I think sometimes certain members of this council forgets that. They were to provide services to their citizens. And I'm directing this at basically two people, Mr. Fleming and Mr. Harlock, because they're the two gentlemen who said no to the original proposal for the 1.9 millage. Had they, had they pursued that and said yes, we wouldn't be here tonight debating whether we had a library or a lot of other things, whether we had potholes being repaired or whether we had snow removal, or the tremendous cuts that are coming up in the future on the police department. We're going to prolong that as out as far as we can, but it is still there. It's still very much in front of us. Somewhere, these gentlemen have come up with the idea that the citizens of Troy were happy with a library that's closed one day a week. I didn't see that vote. I don't know where you got that. Did anyone, when they sent their letters out, their happy letters out, tell the citizens, "No, we're going to have to close the library one day a week at, at least, and maybe close it entirely if we don't vote for the 1.9 millage"? Would you consider that irresponsible? I just wondered. Is, is all you two gentlemen want, when you put on the, the motion last week, is to keep the library open for 2.1 million, and I believe that comes out at 13 months, is to stand in front of the citizens and say, "I voted for the library"? Well, I don't know. You know, you guys have to look in the mirror. I don't. Neither, you guys didn't inform the people of all the services that were going to be cut in the community center. I guess they weren't important. Parks and Recreation, I guess that wasn't important. Police Department, the future cuts coming up, I guess that's not important. You, Mr. Harwick, you used the word evil last week in the council meeting, or two weeks ago in my council meeting. You know what I consider evil? An elected official who refuses to inform the citizens of all the consequences of their votes. Residents, I want to read a little quick article, and I just think this kind of talks about what the gentleman talked about, the "me" people. This was in the paper about three weeks ago. Residents of Troy Township in Oakland County concerned that they were lagging other Michigan communities in contributing to the war effort, voted overwhelmingly, December 28th, 1863, to tax themselves enough to pay a $100 bonus to the local men who volunteered for the Union Army. I can't imagine that happening in this city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Byrd. Next, we'll hear from Karen Craft.
Thank you very much for this opportunity. I just want to mention that I tried really hard to help the tax go through on both millages that were just presented to us in the, in the recent past to support the library, as I thought that was the necessary thing to do. But just like families, when they go out to get a new job and they don't get it or they don't get the raise, they have to cut some things, but they don't cut one whole project. They cut in small, in small places over the whole budget of the family. And I urge you to think of that now. Rather than cut one whole easy, somewhat easy thing to do, one whole project, I urge you to cut more through the whole thing so that we can keep the important things open. And I think that the Troy Library is one of those important things. So I urge you to consider it that way. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would like to read, or at least paraphrase, an email sent today to you, Ms. Mayor, to the Mayor Protam, Mrs. Kerwin, to Ms. McGinnis, and to Mr. Slater. It reads, "I urge each and all of you to find a way at tonight's council meeting to keep our library open without new taxes at this time, at least till year end. By that time, we will have had a new slate of council persons, or at least some thereof, and a new mayor, who will either sustain the library with incurred revenues, or a library millage that we voted on, or some combination of both those. To fail to keep the library open to the least year end will result in your collective legacy being one of shame, namely proposing a three-year budget, calling for the library to be closed, starting in phases beginning April 30th and completing June 30th. That budget almost appears punitive to punish those who voted down two millages, won by an increase of almost two to one. If a library closes as currently planned in addition to a legacy of shame, I suggest that none of you will ever again hold office in Troy or perhaps even in Oakland County." There is now irrefutable evidence that there are ample funds available going into the next budget, which could be allocated to the library to sustain operations at current acceptable levels of around 2.3 million, albeit not the 4.3 billion, a million, rather, of several years ago when times were good. I recognize the usually prudent approach is to leave fund balances and monies resulting from being under budget in a particular budget year as reserved for future years. However, in this current crisis, it would be shameful to do so and let the library close. Prudent and successful businesses use current account balances and such to address critical needs in a particular budget year and to address future years as become foreseen. I worked for a Fortune 500 company in business and continuously profitable since 1802, and which faced many financial challenges, and resolved them by doing the essentials and leaving tomorrow's possibilities till they became realities and then dealing with them. I also asked the city council to immediately abandon plans for the intermodal transportation center, now that our partner city, Birmingham, has prudently and responsibly done so. I hear that would free up up to 1.3 million in the next year's budget, almost 60 percent of what it would cost to fund the library at current acceptable levels of service. While I'm aware of good efforts to reduce the cost of government in Troy by this council, I personally would vote against any proposed millage until a mayor, council persons, and the city manager deal with the elephant in the room, namely to get taxpayers relief from the hypercompetitive and hypercostly salaries and benefits enjoyed by certain contractual groups within the city, most notably the police department and certain department heads."
Thank you, Mr. Hennessy.
You're welcome. Please keep the library open.
Before Mr. Peters speaks, I'll call on the next five people. And I caution people again about the clapping. We still have that many number of people to speak. Wait, Mr. Peters, and we'll start the clock after I call the next five people. Mr. Geiger, Paul Beck, Shanu Stott, Vila, Audrey Zambroski, Herb Wingrow. Will those people line up in that order, please? Mr. Peters, go ahead.
Good evening, Council. I have to admit, I was a bit taken back by tonight, letting half of America seem like go out the door. I don't know if it was contrived or whatnot, but it didn't look very good for our city anyways. And hopefully, something like, in the future, will take mind of that, with all due respect. On the library, I think 50 percent of the population supported that library, basically. Lost by a few. Now, is that worth it to cut off that for that? Now, I propose, now, I don't know if you've come up with this or not, but I feel that the corporations or the wealthy could pay for this library for the remainder of the year. I mean, after all, they're the ones who are benefiting from this government, apparently, so they should have to, to pay, I think. And, you know, they're all saying, "A mind is a terrible thing to waste." Well, you know, that, that holds true. And I think, the big lesson I got tonight, these, a lot of these kids that came out here tonight, this was their first chance to look at the government. And what did you say to them? And you looked them right in the eyes, and they went home frustrated. And they're, and none of them are non-white, and you have to wonder at times about this sort of thing. But, well, thank you and God bless. Good night.
Thank you, Mr. Peters. Mr. Geiger?
Now that Birmingham has officially scrapped the joint transit station project by a seven-to-zero vote by their city commission, can you imagine a unanimous decision? But it comes down to this. The real question is, does Troy have any, or any allocated unspent money left from the transit station project that could be diverted to contending the library at this time? I realize that much of the transit project budget was from federal stimulus grants, and at least some of the Troy allocation has been spent for plans, studies, and so forth. at least some of the Troy allocation has been spent for plans, studies, and so forth. But the real question is, is there any previous unspent allocated money that can be used to bridge the gap between closing the library until the Troy residents and voters can come to their senses and make this work?
Thank you, Mr. Geiger. Mr. Beck.
Hello again. We pretty well covered the transit center, so I'm not going to go over that issue. The issue I'd like to bring up is, three years ago, this council, or certain members of the council, agreed to pay all the salaried employees a 2.5 percent increase, which was approximately $72,000 a year. This is the third year, and it's now $216,000 that we are paying in extra benefits to our salaried employees in the city. That could have very easily have gone to the library. Now, let me take some other figures. This is 2009, 2010. Capital funds for the library decreased by $370,000. Parks and Rec got a $3.8 million increase in their capital budget for 2009, 2010. Police Department got a $464,804 increase in their capital budget. General Government Capital Fund got a $5.8 million increase. All these figures come from the City of Troy's financial page, if you have any questions. Compensation is way, way too extreme. The other thing is, we can afford to keep the Aqua Center open for three months, but we can't afford to keep the library open 12 months. On occasions, I brought up the union negotiations with, with the city manager. No answers, no dollar values, no nothing. It's about time that we got some news from the city manager, and this is the reason why the people don't trust the city manager and the city council. As Burr said, in the headlines in Detroit Times, people don't trust council. Thank you.
Audrey Zambruski. Audrey Zambruski? Yes, come on.
I've been here 32 years now, and I'm one of the advisory board members on the library. But I'm not speaking for them. I'm speaking for myself, because they all know that I voted down the library. I have to explain to you, the reason I voted down the proposal, number one, was our friends of the library are split in two. They're two different groups. They act as one, but they're two different groups. One is more powerful than the other. That's where they were going to put on, in addition, onto the library, where the book people could bring the books upstairs, be on the first floor, the same as a gift shop, because they sell more in the books than the gift shop does. And I could not see these people being put in charge. I'm sorry, that's why I voted them down. And the first thing, when I got on a board, the first thing that was said to me by somebody that's been on there for a long time, was that, if you're going to be on an advisory board, you know, you should have to join the Friends. I think that's a conflict of interest, being on a Friends and being on the advisory board, because that means that when I sit there and I get something thrown to me by the Friends, I'm going to feel like, hey, it's my obligation to vote their way. So I think no one should be on the Friends that are on the library advisory board. That's my suggestion, and I still think that it should be owned by the city, a Troy Public Library, not with other names on there going or anything else. It is a public library. We had two at one time, we're down to one. It's a good one, and I fought very hard to get a lot of things changed. They went about, and maybe it took me six months to get things changed, but by God, I got them done. And my term is going to be up, and I just congratulate whoever takes over. And thank, I will thank McCorran and Mary McCorran and McGinnis for coming to our association meeting. I don't think anything was really accomplished, but I will tell them, be truthful with you on that one. And I think they were expecting different answers. So thank you.
Thank you. Irv, Irv Wengrow, next.
Well, we all knew this day would come, when the budget was passed, a conservative budget, as it was, and then when proposal one was defeated. This day was inevitable. I want to direct my comments tonight, though, to those of you who attended the TCU meeting last week, who are open-minded to another perspective from those of us in Trust. Troy residents unified for a strong Troy. First, you saw it at meeting, a lot of career politicians. So make no doubt about it, TCU has a political agenda, whereas Trust has no agenda. We exist only to educate and inform. Second, be very skeptical when a presentation makes, takes many lines out of context and interprets them to serve their purposes. Just look at their cover page in the presentation. They said that they protected us from a 29 percent millage increase. They used to say tax increase, but can't anymore, since all our taxes would have been lower even if the millage had been passed. So they now call it a millage, which was correct, but what they did not tell you was the 29 percent was only on the small city operating millage, which is about 18 percent of your total tax bill. In my home, that would have been about $180 this year, which I saw as a cheap price to pay for full police services, restored parks and rec, restored street repair, restored snow removal, and of course, a full-service library. But TCU protected us from that, so thanks to them for keeping those value-added items from us. Also on their cover page, they now say their reason to defeat proposal one was to protect us from the danger of an independent library board. Of course, they did not tell you that this board is common in those cities, would be all qualified volunteers, would be all, would only spend the money allocated to them. They used to say their reason to defeat proposal one that they worked so hard on was the millage was not needed. They told us they had a better plan, which turned out to be nonexistent. So they only changed their reason for the library board because we all now know that the small millage in proposal one was the only viable plan to save the library, and they took pride in defeating that. So thanks again to TCU for saving us from a full-service library, which would have cost me about $90 a year. Also in their material was the implication that we could save money from outsourcing our police services to the county. I hope council asks the chief to talk about the dangers of that. Thanks also to council for passing a very conservative budget last year. In fact, ICNA told you it was too conservative. Had you committed to nonessential services in that budget, our financial troubles would have been multiplied by now. The old saying is, how do you know when a lawyer is lying, is also applicable to career politicians. They may not outright lie, but they certainly are experts in misleading us to serve their agenda. TCU's track record is clear on that.
Next, come forward, sir, but don't start speaking yet. Is that Daniel Ewal? Because I'm going to call on the next five people. April Church, Bruce Bloomingdale, Meyer Reinhardt, Scott Foster, and Dan Brake. If those people would come up next behind this gentleman, in that order? Yes, sir, go ahead.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
Give us your name again.
My name is Guneshakar Pillai.
Pardon?
Guneshakar Pillai.
I didn't think I called on you. Did you hear me call your name?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Basically, you know, I moved to Troy like probably eight months back, from Canton. Troy, great schools, good neighborhood. I'm sorry. Okay, I mean, I moved to Troy like eight months back, you know, I mean, good schools, you know, good, great activity center, you know, great library. And I did really enjoy it for the last eight months, you know, all these places. I used to take my son and daughter every other week to basically, you know, take books out, take some good library, I mean, videos. And we had immensely enjoyed all of them. And it is a place, you know, where to meet other, you know, kids, you know, who are having a similar kind of mindset. You could see all the drawing artwork that is displayed in the Troy Library. It's excellent. You know, my son was a great, you know, I mean, he's just eight years old, but you know, he dressed great. And he took, drew a lot of inspiration from those artwork. Every few weeks, they used to change all those drawings, I mean, artwork. And you know, I mean, it was really good. And there was one time, you know, there was some, kind of a competition where all the kids need to basically log the number of books they read, all the books that they read. And you know, I mean, my son, you know, would have probably read like 20 books, just to, you know, I mean, to get his name on the, on the list. So there's, library is not just only, you know, I mean, to check out some books, but you know, it also, you know, brings out a lot of other activities. You know, we want our kids in America to, you know, to grow bright. The competition is immense. It's a global place today. You know, I mean, if you want our kids to be excelling, you know, I mean, we cannot just, you know, close the library and say, okay, man, our kids are going to excel. How are they going to do that? They're not going to do that. I can, you know, take the same approach other people have taken, to give you statistics on how to do it. But, I mean, you know, all I can say is, if, if there is a willingness in this council, you can make, keep the library open. That's all it needs, nothing more. And I earnestly request, you know, I mean, to reconsider your, you know, I mean, opinion and, you know, I mean, vote to keep this library up. Thank you.
Thank you. April. April Church.
Good evening. I actually wrote this before the report this morning, before we heard the report at the beginning, so it was, it's even typed to prove it. But, and I admit that prior to 2010, I would have struggled, but I would have been able to recall the name of the mayor of the City of Troy. I possibly could have provided one, maybe two names of the council, but that would have been pushing it. Okay? I certainly never would have recognized any of you if we crossed paths at Oakland Mall. Let's face it, times were good, services were great. I certainly did not feel a need to keep tabs on all the government stuff. My level of participation in government affairs was to vote at every election. In the nine years prior to 2010 that I have lived in Troy, I attended one, maybe two council meetings. Beginning in 2010, I realized what a mistake that was, not because the city is being mismanaged as some would have you believe, but because I was ignorant of the problems my community was facing. Had I stayed informed, I may have made a difference in the February election. I may have been able to help prevent all the cuts we are facing by being more publicly supportive of the millage proposal. Had I been more informed, I could have worked harder to get proposal one passed and prevented the library from closing. I have learned from my mistakes and have since attended all the council meetings, beginning in January 2010. I have attended either live, as I am tonight, or via webcast. I have done my research. I have listened to Mr. Zerlag and Chief Mayor discuss the state of the city. I have asked many questions. I have sought answers from credible sources. I have the webpage of the city, of the city on my bookmarks. I have learned many things. I have learned that the city is incredibly well-managed, that painful cuts and sacrifices were made by all city employees before cuts to city services were made. The city, the council, city manager, and staff have done what needed to be done, good or bad, to keep Troy solvent. This doesn't mean that I agree with or like every decision the council made. I haven't. But I respect the decisions you have made, because I know they were made after reviewing all the available information, after hours of discussion and argument, and enormous amounts of soul-searching. I want to thank you for your time and effort you sacrificed for the public engagement sessions. I found them to be very valuable. I was able to meet fellow citizens who are driven to keep Troy the city of tomorrow today. I had the opportunity to speak with members of city council in a face-to-face setting. Today, I know the names of every member of city council. I would recognize you on the street. I now have come to know you not as politicians, but as neighbors. Neighbors who care about the city of Troy as much as I do. I'm not going to stand here and give you simplistic suggestions for how we can find the money to restore our services. Any simple solution I can come up with, I'm sure has already passed over the council table. I can only ask that you continue to seek out the revenue we so desperately need, so that in 2012, we can have a grand reopening of our renowned library, and we can have the level of services we have come to enjoy from the city we chose to live in. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today, and thank you for all of your hard work and dedication to the city.
Thank you. Next one is, Bruce Bloomingdale was to be next. Who are you, sir?
I'm Ewal, Dan Ewal.
Oh, no, you're, we were supposed to be in front of her, but that other gentleman came up. Go ahead. Go ahead.
I'm sorry. Thank, I'm sorry for the...
No, you're, you're fine.
My name is Dan Ewal. I've been a resident of Troy for over 30 years. By profession, I'm a writer, and if any of you know anybody who writes for a living, we are notoriously poor speakers, so I'll be very brief. I was extremely impressed by all my neighbors. They, they took a story and told it from their hearts, not just their heads, and I appreciate that from all of you. I got involved with the library about eight to 10 years ago, ran a book reading club, did some other things at the library. I had the opportunity to go there at various times of the day, morning, afternoon, evening, weekends, any days. I'm not being facetious, but I wonder if all of you people know how many services that library provides, not just for people like us, but, well, I am a senior citizen, for all the senior citizens, for all the kids. I wish this had been turned around. I wish the first part of the meeting could have been this. And you look at all those kids' faces out there. They came here because they need this library. I wonder, has a study been made? If the library is closed, what happens to the education system in Troy? We're already fighting, just like every other community. We need this, we need two things. We need, we need compromise and we need common sense. I don't want to be too dramatic, but I'll tell you one thing. The first step toward ignorance is the closing of a library.